Well, welcome to the Ojai City Council and Arts Commission Joint Meeting. At 6 o'clock, January 27, 2015. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council or Commission on Items Appearing on the Agenda are requested to complete a Speaker's Card and file it with the City Clerk prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the Council Chamber and the Lobby. All comments should be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the Mayor/Chair. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and must direct their comments to the Council/Art Commission, not the audience or press. While the meeting is in session, members of the Council, Art Commission, City staff, and members of the audience are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Mayor/Chair. Any meeting participants or member of the audience who engages in this orderly conduct, such as hand clapping, stomping of feet, whistling, using profane language, and so on, which disturbs the peace and good order of the meeting, or refuses to comply with the law's order of the Mayor, may be removed -- ordered removed from the meeting and may be guilty of a misdemeanor. Could I have roll call for City Council?
Councilmember Clapp.
The President.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Mayor Pro temp Blatt.
Here.
Mayor Lara.
Here. Can I have a roll call for the Arts Commission?
Commissioner Baldorman.
Here.
Commissioner Conrad.
Here.
Commissioner Grau. Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Stobo.
Here.
Vice Chair Addison.
Here.
And Chair Golden.
Here.
And may Chair Golden lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I just want to remind people to, first of all, turn on their mics when they speak because people actually do view this at home. I know I try to view as many as I can. And also, just a reminder, this is a workshop with the Arts Commission, so I'm going to turn it over to Chair Golden to see if she wants to lead the rest of the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Lara. I would be happy to do that. And there is somewhat of a revised -- all the items that were posted are on this agenda, but they're in a slightly different format. And I just want to start out because we have new art commissioners sitting at the table tonight to just do a few little introductions. We're welcoming Bobby Baldorman. She's just joined us for her first meeting in January. And Bobby is heading up and chairing the Committee on Arts Education Ojai. So we're really excited to see what she's going to bring to the table for us. And I'm hoping that Commissioner Grau will come bustling in at any moment as our other new commissioner. And I think that you all have met Heather Stobo. Were you here last year at our meeting, or were you just after that? It was just after that that Heather came on board, so this may be the first time some of you have met Heather. And Heather is co-owner of Porch Gallery. So we are very fortunate to have somebody who is young and bringing some new perspective and a new way of looking at art into the city and onto the commission as well. So, welcome to our new commissioners, and of course, you know the rest of us. So those are the introductions, and I also want to thank City Council for this opportunity to bring to your attention some issues, as well as to give you an update on some of the programs that we're working on. And I'm going to start with four items that fall under the Public Arts Committee. And I'm going to speak to those first because you may want to get involved with some questions and some feedback, some suggestions. So first, I'm going to tell you what those four items are, and then I will tackle item one and give you a little detail on that. So I'm going to talk about alterations and modifications to public art. That's the first item. I'm going to talk about maintenance of public art on private property. And I'm going to talk about the -- I'm going to give you an update on the IN project that's going on in the public art component of that. And at the same time, I'll be showing you the new public art program guidelines for private developers, which is hot off the press. And the last thing I'm going to do is in the form of a little bit of an announcement that I'm going to make that has to do with Public Art Fund and has to do with a possible spectacular, wonderful, public art project that the Art Commission, with the permission of the city, may want to embrace. So, starting with the first item, alteration and modifications to public art. I do want to bring to your attention Muni Code. And this particular section of the Muni Code is not just in the new Muni Code that was passed a year ago this January, but it's also in the previous Muni Code. And what it says is that art installed on or integrated into a construction project shall not be removed or altered without approval of the Arts Commission. And so, right away, what comes up for us as a commission is the alterations that were made to two of our public art pieces, the Matilla Hapapi Fountain and the Clough Vista Park Fountain. And while the majority of the commissioners believe it was a good call to save water for the drought that's happening in California, we -- I would, as Chair of the Public Arts Committee, like to bring to the council's attention that there is need for some sort of process to be in place so that the Muni Code is followed and that there would have been at least some notice or some discussion with the Arts Commission that would have gone along with that move to turn the fountains off. I urge the City Council to follow through on this now. I believe that both artists need to be contacted, and if they weren't already, which I don't believe they were, but if they weren't, they need to be contacted. And there are some really pertinent questions that should be asked. What is the effect of having water dry on the surfaces that are meant and were designed to be wet? That's one concern. What kind of maintenance should be going on to protect the surface? Is there any kind of tile work maintenance or pump maintenance that should be taken into account? These are all things that the commissioners would have brought up had we been given some sort of role to play in this, because we do act in an advisory capacity, for the rest of you. Right now, what kind of maintenance is going on? When I was up at Clough Vista Park, it's quite a large basin that is dry, and it's being used as a garbage receptacle. And this is a major piece of public art in our city. And I know public works, or whoever it was that made the decision, is thinking, "Oh, these are fountains," and not, "Oh, these are public art pieces." But they're public art pieces, and they need to be treated as such. And the Arts Commission needs to be able to ask and act in this advisory capacity. So, if anyone has any questions about that, I'll wait before I go on.
Chair Golden, before the -- I mean, I'm reading that section of the code, and the notice to the commission is based on having covenants in place defining that maintenance prior to the execution of the art piece. How are we doing on our covenants? And how -- and what is the record of our covenants in terms of being able to look them up and see whether a violation is going on?
Well, we -- I did attempt to do a search on whether or not there was an agreement because I heard directly from the landscape architect for the project that there was an agreement. I'm talking now about the Clough Vista Park. That's the one that I was researching. And I was told that there was an agreement with the artist not to make any alterations or changes without first consulting with him. However, when we did find a document on it, it really didn't read that tight. Steve McClary helped me with that, and we talked about what that really meant. And it looked more, the way it was worded, that the intention was that there wouldn't be changes to the design of the park. So, you know, you could get -- you could play it both ways. But I think for the purposes of the Arts Commission, it's an alteration. To turn water off a piece that is meant to have water, has a water element, is an alteration to public art. So I would think that as the city, you would want to keep those pieces in good working order. It would be less expensive to know what you're looking at upfront. For example, the reintroduction of water. How should that be done so that tile doesn't crack, or whatever, whatever? Has that been thought through? So that's our concern at this point, that there will be no ill effect on those two pieces of public art.
And I understand, I just think for future reference, it looks like we need to pay more attention to these covenants.
Yeah, I agree.
As we move, hopefully, into a greater level of activity with public art.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chair Golden? I do have a question also in regards to public art. Do we know how many pieces we have here in Ojai?
Hmm. Yes, we now do. I have put together a handbook for the arts commissioners. And one of the sections that I've added into this is called the Public Art Catalog. And I can certainly, if anyone requests, we can make copies. We can make more, just like Doritos. And it's listing all of the public art pieces, public art on private property, public art on public property, and it even lists all the pieces that are held here as the municipal collection in City Hall. So there are four pages that list all of the art pieces. And I think it would be a really good idea to have a copy of this list in the CDD and in the public works, in the hands of public works, so that before any decision is made, they can look and see, "Oh, is it on the list?" Is that kind of where you were going with that?
Yeah, I was kind of going and even offering -- I know we're looking at -- one of my things has been looking at goals and priorities for this -- the whole City Council, and including in that is the commissions. And I think we overlook, sometimes at least I do, I don't want to speak for the whole council, so I want to make sure that I know what commissions are doing and how our staff is. And I know we're really lean in staff. So one of the -- I think it's a great opportunity to encourage a lot of the commission to go out there and work and do a lot of the legwork, and then see how we could work that out with staff, because I would -- we have so much on our plate that I just don't want to add more and more items. But it's a very good issue that you brought up, and I think it needs to be looked at, the covenants especially, so.
Yeah. I don't think it's too late to have that conversation with, whether it was CDD or Public Works or both, that decided to make this move. I still think it's appropriate to contact the artists and to get what information the city can on, now that it's dry, how should water be reintroduced if and when that decision is made? And there are other things, too. I could nitpick this and talk about the signage itself, which is not very artistic to have next to a piece of artwork. And, you know, if we had known, we may have volunteered to do something a little more in keeping with public art, with the signage. Those are all minor things. I think the main thing is, is that we want to bring to your attention that we need to be part of the process.
Mr. Mayor? I think the point of the lack of covenants or the clear definition of covenants on how to take care of a piece of public art being lacking is what the important issue is here. Protocols in place. I think there's a lot of things that we're finding through the years have been sort of loose. We found this with the NEF Lounge and the historic guidelines, that there tends to be a very vague ordinance written, so people are left with really no guidelines. So I would recommend to the Arts Commission to come forward with some recommendations on how you think would be best the maintenance and potential alteration of a piece of public art be addressed. I think that would be very helpful.
Okay. Maintenance and what was the last part of that?
Maintenance and potential alterations. Clearly, you know, I would think that it would be very rare, if ever, that they would be considered. But in the case of a fountain, there may be in the future because of some sort of degradation and need to maybe go in and replace or fix something. So there might be something within the guidelines that needed to be stated there. But maintenance, I think, is critical. And I don't think it would be that difficult, and it would, again, as Mayor Lara stated, we have a lean staff, so if the Arts Commission could come forward with just a very simple set of guidelines, it could be injected into the ordinance. I think it'd be very helpful, because clarification is what's really important. If people don't know what's expected of them, that we run into trouble. So that's what I would recommend.
Okay. Well, the Public Arts Committee will take that up and come back to the commission as a whole with an idea for that.
I think that'd be the great way to solve it. It takes strain on staff, solves -- potentially solves the problem, hopefully, and we can move on from there.
Yeah.
Chair Golden, I have two questions. One is, you have the inventory of the public art pieces. Do we have a photographic inventory?
There is a photographic inventory. It was updated in 2013. It's on a CD. And Linda Harmon, is it not on our website? It's also on the Arts Ojai website, which is the Arts Commission website, so any of you can go and look at it. There are probably some missing pieces in there. It needs to be updated, and another look has to be taken at it. And Pamela Grau is really the one now in charge of working on that, and she's going to be gung ho on having that happen. We're also planning, as long as -- because I think I know where you're going with this, we're also planning on doing a series of articles, the Public Arts Committee, that highlight public art in Ojai by -- kind of by geography. So we want to do a piece on the art that's in Clough Vista Park and the art that's in Rotary Park, and hopefully get one of our, maybe our quarterly magazines to be willing to publish those articles, as well as our newspaper. Because it dawned on me, when I put this handbook together, "Oh, my gosh, we've got all this public art." And I wasn't aware of a lot of it. And it was like, wow. We're also talking about, right now, there are historical walking tours of Ojai that leave the library, and we're thinking of doing one that would be a public art tour that might leave, not the library, the museum. So we have some things, we've -- certainly, these are all in the works and not fleshed out in any way, shape, or form by the Public Arts Committee, but they're on our plate.
The other comment that I have, and I don't think you need to change the ordinance for it, is whenever there's a piece of public art that's being installed, particularly if it's a fountain, that's the time when maybe you should ask the artist, "If this fountain is ever shut off, what do we do to reintroduce water? What kind of maintenance is it going to require? What if pumps need to be changed?" Because the artist may not be around when the time comes for us to -- so, but he would know very well what it was at the time that it was installed. The same thing with any outdoor piece of art, whether there's any kind of ongoing maintenance that's going to be required. Not so much the horse at Rotary Park, because that's intended to, whatever you call it, weather, rust, or whatever. But if there was something, I don't know, for instance, the --
How about the wheel at the skate park?
Yeah, the wheel at the skate -- you know, is that going to need to be repainted at some point? And if it is, you know, what's the process in doing that? Do you have to sandblast it first and do it?
Yes.
So those kinds of things, we probably should get a little write-up by the artist for those things going into the future.
And there is language in the new ordinance that is much clearer and addresses those sorts of documents that have to be put forth that have to do with maintenance. But I think that what Betsy said really comes into play here, and that is that staff is lean, and so if those documents come to the Public Arts Committee to take a look at, so that we can say, "Oh, but this hasn't been addressed," or "That hasn't been addressed," that that will really -- we'll end up with a good document, a good maintenance document.
Commissioner Harmon?
Thank you. For one thing, we do have a really nice slideshow that Susan Ammon put together with our public art. We also have a handbook that Susan put together, and we do have directions on upkeep from a lot of these pieces. I don't know if we have them all, but I know we have them on many, because Susan put that together also. So it might be started. It needs to be complete, but it's already started.
Yeah, I know the more recent ones that we've installed, at least under my tenure, the wheel at the skate park and the trimpin' at Libby Bowl, we have a maintenance manual for both of those.
Yes, yes. Okay. And I'm going to go to the second item, then. And of course, we can always continue discussion on the other.
Chair Golden, I just wanted to add.
Okay, I'm sorry, Randy.
That's okay. I just wanted to ask two questions. That the brochure or the pamphlet that you've put together for yourself and your commission, how easy would that be to turn over to staff and have us generate something that could actually be given out here in City Hall or actually given out at the chamber?
You know, I'm going to talk about that. That's going to come up in one of the items, and it will be made and be available at the front desk for all developers to take a look at.
And two is, how do we access -- you talk to private and public art. How do we access the private art? How do we ensure that that's being maintained properly?
This is number two.
Okay.
So let me address that. Perfect. I paid a visit today to 420 Bryan Circle to take a look at the -- there are 10 three-foot by one foot by about two inches. They stand out away from the columns they're mounted on. The piece was done by --
Doug Lochner.
Doug Lochner, thank you. They are brass panels that have been treated with a patina. And when the building was, about three years ago, when the building was sandblasted, they were not covered and protected. And so the edges, the two-inch edges that stick out, there are 10 of these panels, the two-inch edges that stick out, I actually, you can touch them, because they're not that high up. They have been chipped, almost like you would imagine somebody wearing very, very thick nail polish and having it chipped. So they're chipped. Now, this has been brought to the attention of the owner, I understand, by the city. We brought it up at the last time that we got together here, and I believe, actually, the time before at this meeting, it was brought up that this art, this public art, is deteriorating. Because just like nail polish, once it starts to chip, it continues to chip. And so some of these places where the design of the artwork is chipped off are at least as big as my thumbprint, if not bigger. Some are much smaller. So I would like, again, once again, to call to your attention what is written, not just in the current Muni Code that has to go for any developments after January 2014, but also the previous Muni Code in respect to this. And what it says is that artwork on private property, this kind of addresses your question, Randy, "The obligation to provide all maintenance necessary to preserve the artwork in good condition shall remain with the owner of the site." It goes on to say that "maintenance of artwork shall include preservation of the artwork in good condition to the satisfaction of the city, protection of the artwork against physical defacement, mutilation, or alteration," and so on. And then it goes on to say, "The failure to maintain the artwork as provided in the Muni Code is hereby declared to be a public nuisance. If the artwork is not maintained in the manner prescribed, in addition to all the other remedies provided by law, the city may, upon reasonable notice, perform the necessary repairs, maintenance, and so forth, to have the artwork maintained and, if necessary, restored, and the costs thereafter shall become a lien against the real property." So I put this out for consideration by the council, that it may be time to up the stakes. I cannot give you a history, because I do not know the history of how many letters have been sent, when the last letter was sent, but this artwork needs to be repaired. And it is the duty of the Art Commission to bring this to your attention, that after three years, it is just not happening. So I will take questions on this one, if anyone has any.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Have you had a response? I'll ask, I guess the city manager may have this answer. Have we gotten a response from the owner of any kind?
The last knowledge I know of it is that a letter was sent, probably under, when Robert Mulane was the community development director, so probably a couple of years ago, and I know a letter was sent. And I don't think they did not get a favorable response from the property owner. In other words, the property owner disputed the findings and did not agree with the positions of the city. I don't know where it has gone from there.
And is this one of the properties that's changed hands after foreclosure?
I do not know the answer to that.
So this is an unprecedented situation. We really have no precedent for this kind of situation and resolving it when there's --
Yeah, it's a bit of a standoff, correct, right? I think that's an accurate description.
Thank you.
Well, I would have concern. I just thought, I want to be respectful for the other items on here, but I really think that as a city, we need to start, if we have it in our Muni Code, that if a reasonable time they don't act, I think we should, in my opinion, direct staff to start taking the necessary step to enforce what's on the Muni Code. And I think that that could be put on the agenda item, if we don't want to discuss it tonight. But I know it could be a pretty in-depth discussion right now, and I have lots of questions that rise, that come to mind. How many have we been keeping up with our public arts, I don't want to say supervision or just updates? Have we been regularly checking up on them to make sure that they're in good shape?
Yeah, I know the commission did a survey of them, and if I recall, this is the one that we've had outstanding issues with.
So I don't know how the council wants to bring this up further, but I think it is a good question, along with protocol, that has to do with alteration, modification of public art, because it is a process, and we need to make sure that we follow through.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
I think it's good to go ahead and send it back to the Arts Commission, to have them come forward with a recommendation. In order to keep it simple, I don't think there's a need for another meeting, and I don't think there's a need to put anything onto staff at this point. I think we have a capable commission that can come back with some simple guidelines for recommendation, and I don't think it would be that difficult to amend our ordinance to make it more tied about how we deal with public art. So that would minimize meetings, it'd minimize staff time, and I think we would be, end up with a better ordinance.
Okay. Anybody?
Clarification on, a little tighter clarification upon maintenance requirements, whether there needs to be. That's what you guys need to do, but there sounds to --
Betsy, what are you responding to? Because I didn't hear the comment.
I think it's loopholes, loopholes in the maintenance of public art, is what it sounds like.
In the ordinance that I read, are you talking about?
Yes, yes. Is that, am I correct? That there's not clear guidelines?
From my point of view, I would say no. From my point of view, it's very clear in the Muni Code that if the owner does not repair it, that the city can hire, in this case, Doug Lochner, to do the repairs, present the owner with a bill, and if the owner doesn't pay, it's a lien.
Okay, I guess I misunderstand. It's that each piece of art doesn't necessarily have a set of guidelines. Is that correct? I guess I got lost in this, somewhere in the middle.
There are two separate things, I think.
Yeah.
But I could see how they could both relate, that if we do have specific, more specific covenants about how to maintain the public art, we could potentially not run into these situations where it's not kept up and it's deteriorating. But now, they're asking that it's been three years since they've asked the owner to repair that public art, but --
Yes, it is two different things. I see that, yeah.
And I would just like --
But we would have to, I'm sorry, but we would have to, I think you would want to, look and see how many letters have been sent, when were they sent, and give the owner an opportunity first to respond.
Well, yeah, that was my point. And Mr. McClary, I think is very sensitive to this matter.
Yeah.
I think we're all, you're getting a sense that we all want this pursued, but it means pursuit with some sort of advice from attorney, because you're talking about, upon reasonable notice, all other remedies provided by law. So I think you're going to have to get some legal advice about the reasonable notice and start to execute those procedures. And, you know, at least, I think that's, I just want to urge that the commission is certainly entitled, you know, as an advisory group to the City Council, to getting advice from the city attorney. And I think that's what you're talking about. You want to make sure the procedures are proper.
Yeah.
Before you repair.
Councilmember Haney?
I'd like to say, before we start bringing in attorneys, that we're reasonable people in this community. I'm sure that we could talk to one another.
Yeah.
I guess that was my concern all along with this, was when this ordinance went into effect, especially on new properties, and you had to designate a piece of art as part of your construction process, was one, how it was going to be, you know, what the declaration of that art was and the value, and then two, how was it going to be maintained? And then two, if it's on private property, who's going to ensure that it's going to be maintained? So you can see, we kind of created an environment where there's going to be some push, and there's going to be some maintenance issues regarding a lot of this. My suggestion would be, like Council Clapp suggested, is that we create, we revisit the ordinance, and we just look through it and see how we could tighten it up and be more proactive as the Arts Commission in interacting with the patrons who have all this art, and clearly demonstrate to them the value that it is to our community. And I'm sure, once they have a sense of that, and I'm sure they already have a sense of that, that they'll do what's in the best interest of us.
And I agree with those comments, but I also agree with Councilmember Wyrick, that we do need some advice from the legal attorneys as what is reasonable. And I think that that would give the commission a lot of valuable information of what they could do, what they can't do, and how to interact. could do, what they can't do, and how to interact with our other members of the community. So I think they're both great, good ideas.
Okay, well, thank you, and we'll take all those suggestions back to the Public Arts Committee as well. The third item that I want to go over with you is, I want to let you know that the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa is on board with looking at an art project, a public art project, that they will do as part of their, they're covered under the art ordinance. And I've been contacted by Brian Skaggs and Alex Kim, and I'll be meeting with both of them on Friday, and I will be presenting them with, hot off the press, the new City of Ojai Public Art Program Guidelines for Private Developers, which is kind of, Randy, what you've been alluding to. So I spent a good part of the summer with the wonderful Steve McClary, who really doesn't have time to do all of this, and Barbara Hirsch, putting together a booklet that goes now from the front desk to anybody who comes in and has a project over $300,000 and needs to know what their options are for public art. A copy of this is going to be distributed at the next Art Commission meeting, for all the commissioners to take a look at, because as art commissioners, we all need to know what this document says. And this hopefully expands upon and explains in layman's terms what the Muni Code says as of January 2014. So this is hot off the press, and along with it, Barbara and Steve and I came up with a little blurb that can go on the packet that developers get the first time they walk into Ojai City Hall. Because we realized that they can walk in and pick up an application and never know that the city has a public art requirement. So we wrote a little, real friendly blurb, so that anybody could see that, oh, this is going to come up. When I meet Friday with Brian and with Alex, I will be giving them a copy of this and offering my services to go over anything that they want to go over that's written in this handbook. So I'm just so excited, because this is using your art commissioners in a very meaningful way to let us act as ombudsman for you, because you do, your staff, they work so hard, I can't compliment staff here, a hundred million times for the help that they've given in producing this document and running copies and the editing, and you know what goes into stuff like that. Hats off to everybody that helped with that.
Madam Chair, I would love to have a copy of that, if I may?
Yes, we are in the process of making a few very minor corrections, and once it's printed in its final form, I'm sure we can make more.
And your website.
And we can put it up on the website? Yes, we could do that. We could put it up on the website. No, absolutely. So we'll be passing that on to Heather and Linda for that. So thank you for the trust in us, in me in particular, as chair of the Public Arts Committee in interfacing with the people at the inn. I really, really, I love that. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Yeah, sure.
Just wanted to add, since we don't always know the value of the projects when the developers first come, if it looks like there's a chance that it's anywhere close to maybe getting close to 300 or maybe tipping over in the neighborhood, we'll give them that packet so that they're aware. We don't want somebody to come in and have a $250,000 project, and then make a modification at the last minute, then suddenly find out they're subject to the whole thing. So if it looks like they're going to get in the neighborhood, we'll give it out to them.
Mr. McClary, where is that in the code, the 300,000?
It's 14-16- maybe 205?
205, okay. Okay, thanks.
Or thereabouts.
I got it. I got it. I got it.
207.
That one.
207B.
207B, got it. I just looking it up myself. Thank you. Thank you. Well, it's okay to show off with all the hats you wear.
Well, thank you, Chair Golden.
One more thing.
One more thing.
And then we'll go to other people here. I know I'm hogging most of the meeting, but it's the way it goes. And so the fourth thing is exploring, we are in the process of exploring a major new public art installation on Signal Street, on the side of the theater building. And it is absolutely nothing that's written in concrete at this point. We do have a verbal nod from the theater owner, and the architect who's doing the repair work also is aware that we may be interested in pursuing this. There are so many things that we don't know at this point, so many questions, but I am delighted to announce that the architect for the Pearl Street project has contacted the owner, and the owner is very interested in giving their public art allocation amount to the Public Art Fund, which immediately, it's about $30,000, and on top of, we've got about 17 in there right now. And it should be enough to really seriously look at a public art piece that could go in a downtown space. Of course, the owner of that project would have a plaque that they have donated to it, as well as anyone else that has donated to it, the city. So I couldn't be more excited about having gotten that phone call today from the architect, that they'd made that decision to deposit the funds in the Public Art Fund. Yes, I was just jumping around all over the house, because I just, I am so excited at the possibility that we could move this forward and actually have the city take the upper hand in, through the Arts Commission, in an installation, a major public art installation in a major place, it's been talked about for years in this town, to do something with the side of the theater building. And I think Roger Conrad spoke quite eloquently to the need for timeliness, and there's just so much that we have to do, homework we have to do to present this in a cognizant format to all of you. So really happy about that. And I would like to turn it over to Michael Addison. I know he's got a concern he wants to raise, and then he can give his report, and we can just go around the room. Mm-hmm, yeah, Libby Bowl, I know you had a...
This again is something that we have not discussed or debated at the Art Commission, but it's an item that's been brought to my attention by a number of people in the community who are engaged in public performance, and it relates to the Libby Bowl. And I guess one should start by complimenting the community on the extraordinary effort by, I'm sure, hundreds of people, if not thousands, to completely renovate Libby Bowl. Having done that, it's been transformed, in addition to being in an idyllic location, into a really beautiful facility, an attractive facility, but it isn't complete. And that's the concern that's being expressed by people who are interested in exploring the possibilities of using Libby Bowl for things other than one-night stands by performers or the music festival. The fact of the matter is that the Libby Bowl Foundation has been powerful in its support of the Libby Bowl to this point, but what they've been doing essentially is underwriting losses, and that's generated in part because of the expense of producing in Libby Bowl currently. And this boils down to really two simple elements, and that is, one, a basic lighting system, above and beyond what are essentially floodlights that are there now, a decent theatrical lighting system, and a sound system. To rent those, as one must, if one is attempting to do a production there, is exorbitantly expensive, even if we get discount rates because nonprofits are producing. So I just want to bring this to the council's attention. I know that there are any number of calls on the council for the expenditure of public funds for everything from roads to public safety and recreation programs, but I want to highlight the fact that much of the income of the city is derived from the transient occupancy tax. In that regard, of course, we're delighted that we have the inn, and we're delighted that the music festival draws thousands of people to Ojai. And I would assert that if the Libby Bowl was made more functional for producers, there's a very real likelihood that other events, such as the music festival, that is to say, events that could span over a week, or two weeks, or three weekends, music festivals, theater festivals, performance festivals, could be initiated in Ojai to the benefit of the community culturally and economically. So I just want to bring that to the attention of the council.
Thank you, Michael. Do you want to give a report also on your...
The Mentor Program? Well, the Mentor Program is something that's very dear to my heart. We started this three years ago, the Artist/Student Mentor Program, which I think we're progressively abbreviating and calling the Mentor Program, because that's really the great strength of it. The operation is quite simple. In the early part of the year, we put out the word, and a news release has gone out announcing that we're seeking artists who are interested in participating. Each of the two years we've done it, we've had about 10 or 12 artists respond with a willingness to commit at least 50 hours in the course of the summer to working with an Ojai student in the arts. In recompense, the artist will receive $750, with the expectation that much of that will be spent on materials. And the student, at the conclusion of the work, receives a $500 scholarship. We've had sculptors, we've had printers, we've had an actor-director working with a student, we've had musicians working together. It's been a rich array, and we're about to kick it off again. Once again, our budget allows for us to have four artist-student mentors this coming summer, and in part, that's possible because we have partnered with the Ojai Education Foundation. And they will again this year be providing supplemental funds so that we can fully support four artist-student combinations at the level I've described. At the conclusion of the program, I should add, we then have a reception here in the city hall, and the artist, the students' work is then displayed for a month or so. So the students end up having not only this extraordinary experience of developing an artistic relationship with a professional mentor, but they also then have the joy of seeing their work publicly displayed. And then, in very pragmatic terms, they have something astonishing on their application to colleges, and they have references that will add to their college applications. So in every sense, it benefits the students, and I'm happy to say too, that the artists fall in love with their students. They spend so much more than 50 hours, it's astonishing. So that program is underway, and we thank you for supporting that program.
Oh, okay. Well, since I'm the newest newbie in the Arts Commission, I haven't had a lot of time to really do much with the Arts Education Committee, and of course, inheriting from Barbara Hirsch is quite an act to follow. So I'm sure you're probably all familiar with the Arts 20, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to turn this on. You're familiar with the Arts 21 program that Barbara and her committee had initiated. And of course, we've had some delays with that because of the situation at the theater, and it keeps getting delayed and delayed. So the committee decided we should really look at, what are the true goals and objectives of our arts education program, and how can we enhance what's already been done? And not let it lie with nothing happening while that program has no place to be shown. And so we're looking at, what can we do with it? How can we enhance it? How can we bring more community members in? Because we'd like to expose not only the adults, but how about bringing in some of the youth and the students into this program? And perhaps even trying to work with the museum, maybe even use their space, because it's more intimate while we're trying to wait for the theater. There's all kinds of options of things we can do. Perhaps have professionals come in and lead talks about public art. So, you know, we are looking into a lot of things, and I think it's going to be very exciting once we get rolling. But right now, I have nothing concrete to say is happening, but lots of planning and discussing. So, thank you.
And I remember, we're around the table there next to Betsy.
Linda Harmon, would you like to talk about public relations?
Basically, I'm just going to get everybody up to speed with what we've been doing. Most of what we, what I'll talk about is growing, what we're doing now is growing the website's functionality. I don't know how many people on this, on the council know we have a website, but I'm going to pass these around, and hopefully everyone will get a chance to go there and look at it. I encourage you to do so, and if you have any suggestions, we're sure open to them. But a lot of the things we've already talked about tonight are on the website, so it's a good way to find out about what we really do. Right now, we're in the process of changing the platform that it's on, and we'll be, and Heather, one of my fellow committee members, is working hard at doing that. We're going to be using a WordPress site, it'll just be easier for everybody to use in the future, so we're going to do that. You probably won't see a lot of changes in function, but there'll be some, we'll be able to add some bells and whistles that we weren't before. All the commission applications can now be filled out online, which is a big plus for us this year. Heather made that possible. And they can also, residents can also download a PDF of the application if they don't want to fill it out online. We, well, I'll let you check it out, I'm not going to go down because we're limited on time. I'd like to also say that our committee is responsible for all the press that goes out. We send everything through Steve, who's nice enough to edit it and make it look really nice. And those are dispersed to the news outlets and posted on the website. And I'll just list a few of the things that we're doing. These are the standard things, press releases we do every year, and we have additional ones that may come up. So we have a city grant awards call for applications, that's the one that Michael mentioned. We'll have another one out with the final grant awards. We have mentor applications for the Arts Mentor Program, call for student applications for the Arts Mentor Program, that's where we get the students. We have, then we announce the selected mentor pairings to let everybody know who's going to be working together, and then, and we'll also have a reception and a summary of the program in the end, in the fall. We also put out press on the Lifetime Achievement Award, the Hope Fraser Award, and any arts acquisitions that we purchased during the year with your funds that you've given us. Thank you. We also, one of the important things I'd like to bring up to make sure everybody knows it's there and uses it, is the cultural calendar, that's on the website, that uses a Google Calendar, and it's very easy for the public to go on there, see what's going on in Ojai, and even add it to their own personal calendar. We mentioned the public art, and we're busy working on updating the public arts link that we have on the website now, and hope to build, or help to build, a public app for that. And that's something that we would like to discuss at some point with the city council, because we've kind of been stymied. We really want to do the work, we're really excited about the work, but it does take money too. So we haven't asked for a budget yet, because we're not sure what to ask for, but that may be on the agenda in the future, so. And if anybody has any questions, we'd be glad to ask it. We have three on our committee, Pamela Graus, a new commissioner, she's not here tonight, and Heather, is also on my committee, so.
Thank you, Linda. Roger Conrad, I know you're going to tell us about the grants that were just awarded.
Sure, we were very pleased this year to have, with your support, $15,200 to award to worthy applicants. And this year, we distributed the money between seven either groups or individuals, and bless you. And one of the things that, obviously, we talked about doing public art and a lot of visual things, but this year, the grants have primarily gone to performance groups and to literary groups. So like, one of our long-term groups that we've been supporting is the Ojai Community Chorus, and if you've been to any of those performances, they're really spectacular. We have a new one this year, the Nanette Brody Dance Theater, which will be working in the schools, Nordoff High School and a number of other places will have performances. And then we have another new one, the Ojai Youth Opera, which is a very exciting program. It's basically an opera camp for youth. And then Mary Hamilton, again, has come back with an individual project, a free writers' workshop. And then she's also involved in the Ojai Word Fest, which gets a lot of people coming to see that. That's basically a literary fest... That's basically a literary festival. And then two new people, Scott Smith is doing a seniors' chorus, and Julia Zonic is doing a children's choir. So we're very pleased to award those. And another thing that we do is actually have a workshop for the grants too, which, besides giving grants, we're also training people how to develop these. And they use these grants a lot to, like, once the city has gotten behind them, they can use that as a wedge to get grants from other organizations or other individuals. So that's all part of our process here, to not just give money to people, but make them work as working artists so they can attract other funds and find ways to do it.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger. And Heather Stoboe, do you have anything you want to share about City Gallery?
Yeah, we had six different shows this year, starting with Gino Hollander, Carlos Grasso, Pamela Grau and her husband Jeffrey Crussell, Dana Tartaglia, and we did the Student Mentor Exhibit. And right now, we have selected works from the city, I guess, collection that have-
Collection.
Yeah, that have, either haven't been shown in a long time or have never been shown. And it's actually quite a nice little show, if you guys haven't gotten down to the hallway. So, but it's, yeah, so we've moved along.
Just before, we only have a couple of minutes here, so just before, I was wondering if Roger and Heather, if either one of you want to talk, maybe this is not the time, but if you do want to say anything about lighting? For City Gallery and for City Hall and for City Chambers.
Yeah, one of the things that I made recommendations a long time ago to brighten this room up, and all we did was to change from cool white fluorescents to a warmer fluorescent, which has brought out a lot more color in the room. The museum has just, with my guidance, totally changed over to LED lighting, and we've used the museum to kind of experiment things that would work in an intermittent space, such as our galleries here. Basically, the museum has cut their electrical use for lighting by 85%. So we could do the same thing here, and that also reduces the load on air conditioning and things like that. So very shortly, I'm going to be making the recommendations, and it'll be easy recommendations, because we've already tried these out in the museum, and we really like the results. So we will need to get some new fixtures. The current tracks are breaking down, there's a lot of dead spots, and I'm making recommendations. But, so I'll be coming to you with recommendations for new fixtures, new track, and then we can also get the bulbs at a fraction of the cost. The ones we bought for the museum, we're basically paying a third, and we're actually paying less for LED bulbs than we were having to do for replacement halogen bulbs. So it's going to be a tremendous savings all the way around.
Oh, thank you so much, Roger. And I just want to say, I guess in closing, because I don't see any other comments coming out here, that it is such a delight to work with this diverse group of fellow commissioners. Everybody brings some talent and something unique to the table. I think we're a really strong group, and that we contribute a tremendous amount of energy and talent to the Arts Commission on behalf of the city. So I'm very proud to have served as Chair for the last two years, and really applaud my fellow commissioners for their diligence and dedication. And I thank the city for this opportunity to present a report, and I hope you haven't forgotten the first part of it, where I brought up those four, really two items that have to do with maintenance and alteration. So we'll work on that and get back to you.
Thank you, Chair Golden.
Thank you.
I just want to open it up to anybody else that has any more comments? No one? With that, I do want to thank the Arts Commission, it has been a pleasure also to see you guys in action, going as a liaison. You guys really put in a lot of effort in making all these projects successful, and I do want to make sure that I do, we will follow up, and I will put these items on our goals and priorities, we're working on that, so. But it's good news-
For those golden priorities?
Yes, the golden priority. Well, thank you guys so much. Thank you.